I'm gonna call this meeting of the Land of City Council to order. I'm gonna ask our city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam, city clerk.
All right. Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam city clerk. Now, we will have our pledge of allegiance be led by Councilwoman Bernadette Suarez and Pastor Matthew Harbison from Landale Wesley Church will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand and face the flag. Right hand of your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for our time together and we thank you for these civil servants who just, they do so much for the community. And we just ask that they would continue to listen to the community so that everyone would be able to be like-minded. We ask that there would be peace among our citizens. And we ask also that your presence might be made known in their lives as they walk throughout their lives and they see the people around them, that they might be able to act with kindness and love. We also ask that the community members who are here today might receive your grace, that they also might act with kindness and with love. So that as we as a community walk forward, we're able to reach one another and able to help one another so that as a community, as a city, as a place in which we live, may this be a better place because we are here. We ask. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Harbison for being here tonight. Thank you for those words of inspiration. Thank everyone for joining us tonight. We do have, Mr. City Manager, we do have a new member of our team has joined us today. You want to make an introduction or the city clerk or who want to make this introduction?
Mr. City Manager, I mean, Mr. Mayor and Council, excuse me. I planned on bringing that up at the City Manager's comment unless you want me to. Go ahead and move forward now.
But you're welcome now.
Okay.
We're welcoming to the family now.
I'll do that right now. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce our new Assistant City Clerk, Yvette Hall. She brings with her over fifteen years of professional city clerk experience. She began her city clerk career working for the city of La Cuenyada, Flint Ridge. From there, she served as city clerk and deputy city clerk for the cities of South Pasadena, San Carlos, Placentia, and Rolling Hills. She comes to us from the city of Burbank and where she was responsible for records management, election administration, legislation review, public records requests, and assisting the city clerk plan, organize, and direct the overall functions of the city clerk's office. Well, we're glad to have her here and if she would like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Thank you, City Manager Moore. It is my pleasure to be here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, community and staff. I'm very excited and I am honored to be here. I look forward to working with all of you. And if there's anything I can do for you, just let me know. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to the family. All right, with that, we will proceed with our public safety report. Item C, let's start with our Sheriff's Department. Let's have the public safety followed by LA County Fire Department. Public safety.
All right, good evening. Jose Salgado, Lieutenant, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, South Los Angeles Sheriff's Station, here tonight for the public safety report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm presenting the public safety report for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Couple of items on the report. On August twenty-eighth, at approximately zero zero forty hours, so forty minutes after midnight, Deputy Alvarado conducted a traffic stop near Rosecrans Avenue and Inglewood Avenue for traffic violations. Upon contacting the occupants of the vehicle, she determined that the driver was on probation. Both occupants were detained. The vehicle's VIN number was ran through Department Resources, which revealed the vehicle was stolen out of Lakewood Sheriff's Station. The suspect admitted to purchasing the vehicle for fifteen thousand dollars, but never registered the vehicle. And he was subsequently arrested for possession of a stolen vehicle. And the suspect was a resident of the city of Wilmington. On September fourth, at approximately ten thirty hours, ten thirty in the morning, Deputy Ariola conducted a traffic stop at Freeman Avenue and Manhattan Beach Boulevard for traffic violations. Contacted and detained the driver pending a driver's license investigation. During the investigation, it was discovered that the suspect had methamphetamine, a glass pipe, and two six point six three five caliber rounds of ammunition. The suspect was in possession of narcotics and possession of ammunition. And he was a convicted felon, so he was arrested for those charges. And the suspect was a resident of the city of Hawthorne. On August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, right after midnight, incident, vehicle versus a bicyclist, which was a fatality. The bicyclist was traveling southbound on Number Two Lane and was side swiped by the vehicle traveling southbound as well. The vehicle continued traveling southbound and fled the scene. The bicyclist was deceased. And that's where we are actively working the case. Our Detective Ezekiel Garcia printed out a flyer, which I have a few flyers. Be on the lookout for your vehicle. The flyers were distributed to all South Bay cities as well as all sheriff stations in the county. And vehicle information is a light nineties silver Toyota 4Runner outfitted for off-road. Black rims, black rooftop luggage rack, along with sunroof, black push bar, and a right front passenger headlight casing was shattered. So there's that evidence that was left at the scene on that one. Detective Ezekiel Garcia is the handling detective out of Landale. If we have any more questions, we can direct them to him. And we are also working in conjunction with you to get a live press conference to seek more information from the public and try to solve this fatality and bring some peace to the family members. Any questions?
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the lieutenant's report? Councilwoman Suarez.
I just have one question. Are we able to get a JPG or like a digital image of this?
Absolutely.
That way we can post it on social media and whatnot.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lieutenant, for your report. Our prayer goes out to the families of the victim. And of course, we'll be in touch a little further along probably sometime this week about doing a press conference to bring more attention to this fatal hit-and-run traffic collision. Thank you for your report. With that, we will move to the LA County. Where did you go? Fire Department, yes, sir. Battalion Chief Martin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Chief Martin can't be here tonight, so I am his substitute. My name is Battalion Chief Ramon Valdoria. I'm here to talk about the statistics for the amount of calls Landale generated for nine-one-one emergency that required fire department. In total, there was a hundred forty-three calls in the city of Landale. Of those calls, a hundred thirty-seven were medical aid called that required ALS, advanced life support or basic life support from the fire department. Of the hundred forty-three calls, three of those calls were fire calls. All three of those calls were fires that were cooking fires that were contained to the container. So no damage to the property and no one was displaced from those fires. Also, we had three good intent calls. Those calls included wires that were found down. Public assist, someone needed help getting up from falling down from their bedside. End of report. Any questions?
Okay, are there any reports from the LA County Fire? Okay, thank you for your report. We thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on our agenda is oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body, please line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you will come to the podium, if you would start with your name, we would be grateful for that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on that gives you the signal to start wrapping things up. And shortly thereafter, if you're still speaking, the city clerk will gently remind you that the light has went off. So let's have our first speaker. He's a familiar person.
Hello, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem and councilmembers. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. And I'm the District Representative of State Senator Stephen Bradford, representing the thirty-fifth Senate District. I wanted to announce that the Senator will be having a Sixth Annual Men's Empowerment Summit next Saturday in conjunction with KJLH Radio. It'll be Saturday, September seventeenth, from eight AM to five PM. And they're kicking the day off with a prostate walk. This will be at Cal State Dominguez Hills throughout the campus. And they will also have informative sessions throughout the day. And the panelists of the day include topics like dating in the digital age for entrepreneurs, building generational wealth, metaverse gaming, esports, as well as men's health and prostate panel. So we encourage everybody that would like to come within the Landale community to register at kjlhradio.com and click on the events link and you can register there. Or you can call me or at the office at three one zero four one two six one two zero. And lastly, I just wanted to thank councilmember Kearney. We actually had a back-to-school resource fair last month and he came on to participate as well as volunteer representing the city of Landale. And I'm so sorry that my printer ran out of ink. But we had an event that serviced about two thousand people that came, attended that day. We gave out seven hundred backpacks. And councilman came by and he was there. He was doing a lot, a lot of the volunteering, a lot more than other people have. So we really appreciate you. And here's the event that we, or the photo that we had for the press release. And he's right there, right along with the Senator. And we just really thank you so much for your volunteerism. And the city of Landale is very lucky to have a hands-on councilmember such as yourself. So thank you so much. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Today marks a fifteen-day period during which the water districts, including Golden State Water Company, are requesting that residents and businesses do not water the yards for two weeks in order to repair a water pipeline. As Landale already has an abundance of yards and parkways that are already dirt and weeds, this no watering request will certainly not contribute to Landale's beautification. Los Angeles County is in the midst of a serious drought that might require even more severe restrictions. According to an article in the Los Angeles Times, California water districts are under growing pressure to shoulder water cutbacks to prevent the Colorado River's depleted resources from reaching dangerously low levels. California has the largest water entitlement of any state on the Colorado River. Reducing the state's use of the river could involve expanding drought restrictions in cities and increasing incentives for property owners to remove grass. With all this going on, it is time for the city of Landale to review its code section on artificial turf and always also encourage drought tolerant planting. Back in twenty fourteen, the Planning Commission had a detailed and reasonable plan on artificial turf in the setback. While the Planning Commission recommended allowance of up to seventy-five percent of the setback to be artificial turf, the City Council cut that down to only fifty percent. As the state had allowed artificial turf, the City Council at that time reluctantly allowed it, but with restrictions that certainly did not encourage artificial turf. The Council added a requirement that this work be done by a licensed contractor. This made this cost prohibitive for many homeowners and it could be difficult to find licensed contractors to work on smaller yards. Revamping the code might also reduce code enforcement issues as I have seen many lawns and parkways with nice-looking artificial turf that might not have a permit due to the code's restrictions. The city should encourage drought tolerant landscaping and parkways and yards at every opportunity. The city's Parkway Design Plan discusses maintenance of drought tolerant replanting and this should be emphasized in landscape plans for the front setbacks as well. What further actions will the city take to be proactive as a drought in California continues to be a long-term, ongoing problem? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Pino from Landale Library. And I'm here to share with you some programs that are gonna be happening this month at Landale Library. So for children, we're gonna be having Smarty Pants Storytime Thursday, September first, eighth, and the twenty-ninth from ten thirty to eleven. Nature Explorers, who take place Wednesday, September fourteenth, at three thirty. Kids Club Bilingual Lotería. We're gonna be celebrating our heritage month this month. So September twenty-first at three thirty. Family Night, Tuesday, September twenty-seventh at six. And Creation Station, it's every Saturday from ten to five. We set up a table in the children's area and just put out a whole bunch of arts and crafts and children can just go ahead and create whatever's in their imagination at that time. The library scavenger hunt is gonna happen throughout the whole month. Any day they come in, they can participate in the scavenger hunt and they can earn prizes at the end. We also have a kids' book club in a bag. It's throughout the whole month and this is for ages eight to twelve. And once they finish the questionnaire that comes with the book, they earn a prize as well. For teens, we have our, we had our teen volunteer orientation last Thursday from four to five. And we had a good turnout with teens. We had, for this month, we have five new volunteers. So we're looking forward to seeing them more at the library and participating in our teen events. Thursday, September eighth, we're gonna have Teen Thursday. And it'll be from four to five. And it's just an hour that we're gonna be in the meeting room, letting them play games and crafts and just take a break from homework for a little bit. Thursday, September fifteenth, we're gonna have open house. And we're just gonna make sure that they, everyone's alert about the resources that will help them succeed in school this year. We have a lot of databases that it's available for them for homework. And we also continue with our teen advisory board meetings, which take place this month. It'll be September twenty-second from four to five. And this is all teens that wanna make some sort of change at the library. They're welcome to come and give their input for that. And for adults, we have our book club. So this Thursday, September eighth, they're gonna meet at ten thirty. And just want to invite also everyone, all the adults, to our Landale Gardening Club, which takes place every Friday from four to five. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close public comments and thank everyone who spoke tonight. Let's bring it up to the dials for any comments from the council. Let's start with Councilmember Kearney.
I want to thank the two ladies and young man that spoke tonight. I will respond to Ms. Librarian. Thank you for the update and all the library events. And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague to my right.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Not much different, but just thank you to everybody that came out and gave us some comments, updates, and events. We appreciate it and I'll pass it on.
Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. And I do agree with Rondell. We need to, as the city, we need to see what we could do to promote the drought tolerant plants and artificial grass because we are in desperate need of water. So maybe that's something that our staff can look into and bring it back to us sometime in October.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Hoffman-Gorman.
I'll just add to the others. Thank you to the three of you for coming out. It's nice to see you, Jasmine, from Bradford's office. Always a pleasure. And thank you to the librarian for always giving us a full calendar. If we don't know what to do, if we have bored kids, it obviously, it's time to take them to the library because there's plenty going on there. So thank you.
Okay, Jasmine, thank you once again for representing our Senator tonight. And we thank you for being here. We know you're very busy, but we thank you for representing the Senator tonight. Also, I also would say concerning the drought tolerant landscaping, you know, this is something we take a look at probably every year, if not every other year. Definitely every other, but seem like every year. So it's a growing progress. But I do agree that we should take a look at this, at it to see about revising the plan to make sure that one, that we are in conformance with the, you know, the state restrictions or the water districts restrictions or what have you, or guidelines, I should say. And also, just as a matter of making sure that we do our part to make it easy for people to be able to, to help conserve water, this precious resource. So I do agree that we need to take a look at that and possibly, you know, take another look at allowing turf to some degree. Because it's not, you know, like I said before, this is not the same type of turf that we were talking about twenty years ago. It's a whole different type of turf or what have you. So I think that's worthy of taking a look at. Madam Librarian, thank you once again for always keeping us up to date on what's going on in the library and in particular informing our children, our families of all the wonderful activities there that they can avail themselves of at the library. And we really appreciate that. With that, I think that's all that I have. Yep, that's all I have. And with that, we will close public comments and comments from the council. And we will continue our agenda. We are now on item, this will be item F. The consent calendar. There's five items on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
If there's no additions or fractions, I make a motion to accept the consent calendar as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion's been made by Kearney that we accept the consent calendar and seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing now with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item, item number six, a grant funding agreement with Los Angeles County for Measure A Technical Assistance Program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Good to see everyone tonight. This first item, Los Angeles County Measure A Technical Assistance Program Grant Funding Agreement. Very, very simple item here, but just to give you a little bit of background, since two thousand eighteen, the city has been a per capita recipient of grant funding at about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars per year. And that was voted on in two thousand sixteen by Los Angeles County voters. It passed by a seventy-five percent clip and was basically a replacement for Proposition A, which sunset in two thousand sixteen. So this legislation is in perpetuity. So since two thousand eighteen, we've been gathering about a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, which we are, those are Measure A funds. So those are per capita. Once again, the definition of per capita is based upon population and needs. So we're getting a lot more money than other cities because we're considered a city with very, very high needs. So that's the link to the TAP funding. So back in June, we were awarded two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in TAP funding, Technical Assistance Program Grant Funding. Now, the link here is that the TAP funding is linked, directly linked to Measure A. So we can use the TAP funding on Measure A projects. Now, what does TAP funding do? What are the benefits? I gotta commend the county for doing this because before TAP funding process was put into place and passed by the Board of Supervisors, you would have a project, a Measure A project, which are generally capital improvement projects in the city. Let's say just hypothetically, we had a project for five hundred thousand dollars. Well, all the soft costs for that, for that grant would come out of the actual funding for the grant. It would be architectural costs, planning costs, all the soft costs that go into that. Well, the reason why I commend the county on this is because now we have a nice pool of money to pay for those soft costs. And what this means is all the project money is gonna go one hundred percent towards the project instead of losing money towards soft costs. So if that makes sense to you folks, that's basically what we're doing here. So you know that we're looking forward to a big project in Landale over the next three to four years, which was started by some funding that we got from, from the California Natural Resources Agency. So what we'll be able to do with this money is we'll be able to save it year after year for a large project. And I'm projecting that, well, this year, we're gonna close in, getting close to one million dollars. Just as a really quick projection, we'll be up to about one point two in September two thousand twenty-three, up to one point three in two thousand twenty-four. So this money is being seen at this time to contribute to that large project coming in a few years, which has been insinuated could be some type of Landale Teen Center project, a teen complex with possibly a municipal services department building as well to house those staffs. So I commend the county for this. So basically, TAP soft costs can basically rob a project from anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent. So this is really, really good news. So the city attorney's office has reviewed the attached LA County agreement and has approved it to as form, as a document that can't be manipulated or changed or revised in any way. That's just the way the county agreements are. You have to sign them as is. So again, this is great news and we're gonna use this money as we graduate into Measure A projects and for soft costs. This is a lot of money for soft costs. As I mentioned before, up to twenty percent per project can be used on soft costs. So again, I commend the county. Landale will get another boost this month with another hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So we're just letting that money grow until we can really contribute it to a really, really large project. I gave you a brief overview of the future Landale large-scale project that we're looking at doing. The staff recommendation at this time is to, number one, approve the attached contract services agreement for Los Angeles County Regional Parks and Open Space District Technical Assistance Grant Program funding between the city of Landale and Los Angeles County Regional Parks and Open Space Districts. And number two, to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, at which time we'll send it off to the county and we'll be fully compliant with using those funds when it's time to use those funds. So that's everything in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I don't have a question. I just want to make a point of, I got you, a point of clarification that the large-scale project that you're alluding to is a teen development center where the money principally was earmarked from the California State Budget, courtesy of former Assembly Member Autumn Burke.
Okay.
And although it may be some type of mixed use in terms of the municipal service department may be housed in that same department, but essentially it's gonna be a community development center for our youth and our young adults. So I just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same large-scale project.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that, I think Councilman Cuevas had a question for you.
Really quick, these funds do not expire or we don't have a limited time to use the funds?
That's correct. What we have to do is we have to declare with the county. They'll ask me once a year, what are you gonna do before I had other projects? So hey, we're gonna do this next year, this is the follow-up year. You have to give them like a extended out calendar. But since, you know, I've been talking with Sean about this almost weekly and the mayor helped out with this grant from Burke's office. And I apologize, but the California Natural Resources Agency is the vehicle to deliver the funds. So they give them to the state agency. We work with the state agency to get those done. So we declared as of this year that we're saving all of our Measure A funds for a large-scale project. As long as you declare and you keep them informed on what you're doing, they're not gonna come down on you. You know, if you're just not using the money and you're not declaring and just letting them sit there, they wanna see the money used, they'll encourage you to use them. But yeah, yeah, great question.
And could we make sure that it's declared for the teen center or for the building that we're gonna try to build?
Yes, yes, absolutely. We won't use it for anything else. And then as I get into the fall and my plate gets a little bit lighter here in the fall, we will be working on grant applications and grant applications for that project. So this fall, you're gonna see that grant project really starting to move because we really have to finish that project by March two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just wanted to add a comment, not a question, but this was actually a project that got put on hold previously and we didn't think we were gonna be able to do it. So I did want to say thank you to our mayor and to the former Assemblywoman for getting those funds and any funds that we can put towards it. Really thankful for making that happening for our residents and community.
Yeah, and just so everybody really knows clearly, I think we have four million dollars right now with our contributions of Measure A funds. Which is gonna put us in the five and a quarter million. And I know we have a couple other irons in the fire and we're hoping for more money to come through. I think we have two. Uh, I think we have two, two other four million dollar grant applications out there. Uh, a project like this, we're probably gonna need another nice, uh, grant to get up into the eight or ten million dollar range, but we're halfway there. So.
And I believe our Congresswoman has an ear open for sending some money this way.
I don't know if you want to say it aloud, but yeah, that's one of the, the irons in the, in the fire.
Yeah.
We can't count on it yet, right?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for that report. Uh, let's see. So what's the action item you need tonight? Need us to, um,
Authorize, uh,
authorize, okay.
City manager to sign the agreement.
Anyone's interested in authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement for?
I'll motion to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on the motion?
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Next item under administration is a memorandum of understanding with Los Angeles County Metro concerning accepting local return funds.
Thank you, Mayor. And you guys are very familiar with this. This is like the thirteenth year in a row we've gotten awarding, uh, uh, county funds from, uh, LA County Metro. In a nutshell, what this is, this is called the NTD program. It's called National Transit Database. FTA provides money nationwide. They pass it down to the county and they basically pay cities to go through an audit and to provide transit data for the FTA to use to determine where funding goes each year. So as I mentioned before, this is our thirteenth year in a row. These are local return funds. And these are directly from the, uh, result of us getting a, a positive audit without any findings, our ridership for the Lawndale Beat. Now, the Lawndale Beat has been suspended for some time and this funding actually goes back to FY two thousand nineteen-twenty. It sounds kind of weird, and it is, but the county lags two years behind. So, uh, for FY nineteen-twenty, we received thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. That's for the positive audit for selling our, uh, transit-related data to the FTA through the county. And then also during that time, there was coronavirus, Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Supplemental Act that gathered us another two hun- twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So in FY two thousand nineteen-twenty, the county decided to just put these two pools of money together. And, uh, for FY two thousand nineteen-twenty, the city will realize fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars in proposition, Proposition A eligible funds. And I know when we brought this last year, we had a discussion about what can these funds be used for. We have a wealth of Proposition A funds. These funds have to be used in the same manner they were gathered in on public transportation or roads that support public transportation or amenities that support public transportation, which could be bus stops, bus pads. I know we did a bus pad on Hawthorne Boulevard a few years ago that, that this, these monies paid for and things like this. So this money, uh, has no deadline to use. As, uh, jumping ahead to Miss Quavis' question, uh, in the previous one, there's no deadline on using this. But the county will breathe down your neck and make sure that you are trying to use it if you can. Uh, so that's the, the basis of these funds. Uh, the, the one unfortunate thing I'll mention about this, cause I don't want it to be a secret, it's in the staff report, is unfortunately, because the Lawndale Beat was down since, uh, May two thousand twenty, we will not realize any, any NTD funding for FY twenty-twenty-one and FY twenty-one-twenty-two. But we are talking about a return of the Lawndale Beat possibly in the new year, since we get out an RFP and get all that business done. Uh, so that's, that's basically, uh, it in a nutshell. So, uh, they're not easy funds to use. Proposition, Proposition A funds are not as easy to use as Proposition C. Proposition C being streets and sidewalks, but, uh, we have some, I think we have some ideas on how this money can be used in the future. Uh, the city attorney's office has reviewed the attached MOU and approved it as to form, again, another county contract, which can't be changed. And the city attorneys understand that. Uh, the recommendation is as follows. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor or city manager to execute the required MOU between the City of Lawndale and LA County Metro, accepting, uh, thirty-seven thousand three hundred and forty-three in local return funds and additional twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty-seven in CRRSA funding, which is Coronavirus Supplemental Act Funds, uh, for a total of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. And, uh, the county's made it simpler to get the money now. They no longer require, uh, wet signatures. They, they are okay with electronic signatures. So something like this, it used to take four to six months to get your money. I'm suspecting we'll now get our money in maybe two to three months since they've changed the system and sped it up. So I imagine we'll see these funds coming into the city's coffers, uh, this fall, maybe around the holidays. That concludes my report and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions on the, the report of item seven? Seeing none, what is the?
I'll make a recommendation from staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we go with staff recommendations and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll, the council, please vote.
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Alrighty, thank you. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item H, city manager's report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Uh, I'll be fast tonight. Um, just for clarification, uh, we met with the Lawndale Elementary School District and they, uh, they had questions. Uh, just for clarification, I decided to get back to the council as well. The agreements that we have in place with the school district are user, user agreements. They're not lease agreements. Um, so just so the council's aware, and there is not a dollar exchange. I know that has been brought up several times by the school. Schools mentioned it to me. Um, there is no fee in chart. We don't collect a dollar. It's just based on, the agreements are just based on our use of them and our agreement to maintain the properties. So I just wanted to clarify that with the council. Um, so, and the next item I want to bring up to the council, uh, periodically, this has come up, um, including, we do allow, I know the council may wanna look at amending the ordinance, but we do encourage drought tolerant landscaping. As the mayor's mentioned, we do update our water-efficient landscape ordinance based on the state's requirements. And it does allow drought tolerant landscape installation. Uh, the only challenge is a lot of the residents are not interested in tearing out their, what we've dealt with folks at the counter, tearing out their irrigation and putting in drubber, uh, systems, hiring a landscape architect, as well as hiring a, a irrigation, uh, cause you have to have certain requirements under the state requirement. So what we've been doing is working with the residents. They can install it, but there's been a little bit of, uh, folks not wanting to follow the, we, we call it the, the water-efficient landscaping requirements in the state law. But we'll definitely work with staff. We'll bring that back to you for consider, reconsideration. And we do allow turf. If the council recalls, it's up to fifty percent of their live landscaping material, they're allowed to use artificial turf. We do not ban that. They're allowed to use that as well. I know it comes up sometimes, so I just wanted to address that. And, uh, I recently announced that we cleaned the Burlington Northern, thank you to Michael Reyes and his teams in Public Works. Burlington Northern Santa Fe went in and cleaned in that area along the right-of-way there, that, that like depression area. Um, it's been cleaned up finally with all the hazardous materials, the needles and whatnot that have been sitting in there piled up. It's about four, about two or three feet deep down. You can't see it off Artesia and the railroad tracks. But they finally went in there a week ago and cleaned that up, so we're happy about that. We continue to do our homeless outreach with the homeless. Um, we've been getting them to understand, you know, take, we, we do have one success story. I shared with the council, shared with the community. Uh, we had someone that was on the back area of the community center. Uh, Mike, Mr. Estes got involved with Mr. Reyes's office and they did finally, the folks accepted services. So we were happy about that. Was a success story that as far as I know, they're, they're in transitional, we're working on the transitional housing. So we continue our outreach efforts with, with the folks on the homeless daily, uh, twice a day. So if anyone has any questions or wanna contact my department, city manager's office, or Michael Reyes and MSD, we'll be happy to go out there and engage the folks and try to offer them services. And that concludes my report today.
And can we, um, do, you probably already are doing this, but just in case, um, some outreach services, um, on Manhattan Beach in Mansell, right there, the, the freeway, um, it's on the opposite side of the street, which would be on the, the south side of the street of, uh, Manhattan Beach.
Yeah, well, well, well.
It's a growing community, uh, back there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to, uh, one other thing, we reached out to, uh, I've gotten several comments from the council regarding the right-of-way areas. I sent follow-up emails to Caltrans. They responded, but I did ask them to, um, ask what, cause they've been piling some of the folks' stuff out under our public right-of-way, if they could work a little closer with the folks to see what they're willing to take and what they're willing to, you know, the Caltrans picks up and hauls away. Caltrans comment, uh, they can't, you know, tell the homeless or the folks that, you know, what their stuff they can keep. So, but they will continue to monitor the situation a little closer than recent times, what's been happening. And after clean out the right-of-way areas on the four oh five, most of the stuff gets dumped on, uh, onto the city's right-of-way and then I have to send Public Works out. We have to work with the homeless to ask them what they wanna keep and what they don't. Uh, so we've asked Caltrans to, you know, monitor that a little closely, so it's just not thrown out of the city's right-of-way. So I'll get, I get numerous complaints, probably ten a day if that happens. So we contacted Caltrans. They said they'd do a little bit better job with their contractor and work closer with the homeless like we do and, and try to get them to tell us what they wanna keep and what, where they wanna take it versus, you know, they stacked pilot it. And I, they stacked it up pretty highly last time and I've got, I got several calls from residents about that, so. And I did contact Caltrans again and asked them to put locks and gate, and locks and chains back on the, uh, the right-of-way areas and stuff. But they get cut off, the homeless have bolt cutters and stuff and they cut them right off. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager's report? Okay, let's move to the council, um, reports. Um, let's hear from Councilmember, um, Pat Kearney.
I have, uh, three items. First one, I, the whole council attended the grand opening, ribbon-cutting ceremony of, we rocked the Spectrum Gym. It was a fantastic little event. City manager was there. And then on a, our future agenda, maybe next one, I'd like to bring, um, for discussion only, to see if we can do a more term on rent control here, because I know the county rate authorized a ten percent rate, rent increases. And we fault LA counties, so a person that, um, rents a house for three thousand dollars, the rent's gonna, can go up possibly to thirty-three hundred dollars. I've talked to four individuals in the city already about the rent. Their rent went sky high, so maybe we'll bring back next agenda discussion period on this. And then also I wanna bring back the ordinance on advertising handbills. I'm in Michael Reyes's office like once a week with business cards, handbills. I have another one for him from Mona's with auto insurance and, and whatever it is. I think we have to look at that. I don't think that the, uh, citation fee is enough, cause they continue to do this. These are repent, repeat offenders. So I'd like to see that come back in the next agenda too. With that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Councilwoman Suarez.
Okay, so for my, um, items, I, uh, the, I believe the entire council attended the August seventeenth, uh, Green Line Community Open House at Losinger High School. It was directly after our last council meeting, so, um, that was a while ago. Um, no questions were, um, you could ask questions, but it was more of a walk around and see the different options that they were looking at, different possibilities, um, for the Green Line extension. Um, on August twenty-sixth, I did attend the South Bay Cities Council of Government's Board of Director Meeting. Um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, they did have a couple of very interesting speakers with regards to housing and the, um, regional housing assessment, um, the, I think that, I can't remember the, the terminology, cause we, we say rena all the time. It's basically the amount of housing that each city or jurisdiction has to allot for, um, within their, their plans, their, their, uh, housing element plans. So, um, very interesting speakers with regards to how it impacts particularly communities like Lawndale and whatnot. And they brought up parking and, and a few other issues, very, very interesting. I believe the PowerPoint presentations should be on the, um, South Bay Cities Council of Government, um, their online website. If you Google it, I believe under their, uh, meeting notes, it should be there. Um, and then, yes, also attended the grand reopening for we walked the Spectrum Gym. Um, and then, um, on August thirty-first, I did attend, um, the City of Lawndale's Hawthorne Boulevard Specific Plan. You know, we're, we're hoping a lot more residents, um, show up to some of these events. This was our first in-person event. Um, so we had a handful of, of residents, um, but just really, really hoping that, um, if you're, um, if you go online, we do have a separate website for it, just to give comments on what you'd like to see in the city and whatnot. So I'm really hoping more, we get more participation, um, so we have a, a wider, uh, you know, wider amount of residents that actually give feedback. Uh, with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Quavis.
I did attend the Metro Green Line meeting at the high school. I was not happy with the way it was ran. I thought it was gonna be more of a meeting where we could hear the questions that our citizens had or our citizens could hear what we had to say to Metro. So hopefully next time, it could be a more of a Q and A, uh, scenario rather than a walkthrough of what it's gonna look like. Um, I did notice that there were people from Torrance and Redondo there, not so many of our residents. Um, they did, I do thank them because they did have a translator there. So if you didn't speak the language, English basically, there was someone translating, which she was very good. Um, but that's, I, I didn't feel that, that meeting served what we were looking for. Um, also, I, uh, participated on August twenty-seventh, the Relay for Life event. I put a team together called Team Lawndale and that team, uh, raised sixteen hundred dollars. It was an all-day event. All those funds go straight into the cancer research. Um, I'm hoping the next year, um, I'll have more than five people attending, uh, that event, uh, as part of Lawndale. Um, and, um, I would like to have that event done at Alondra Park and hopefully get Hawthorne, Lawndale and Gardena together to do a, a Relay for Life. Um, I also met, uh, our Southern California Gas Representative, Victor Ibarra. Uh, he will be reaching out to the city, uh, manager to set up a presentation at one of our meetings. Um, I also met with, uh, Diane Forte, our SoCal Edison representative. They have some good information for us, um, on how to conserve energy and their future projects. Um, so Diane is also gonna reach out to our city manager to set up a, a meeting. Um, uh, I've been asked about the street project on Kingsdale and One Forty-seventh. Uh, it seems like it's not finished, especially on One Forty-seventh and Kingsdale. They didn't pave the entire, uh, street going northbound, so there's like a little bump. And, um, if you're riding a bicycle or something on the street, you just hit hard. So if we could, uh, see what's going on, I have some pictures that I'll send, uh, Sean, I'll send you those photos.
We'll look right into that.
And then I would like to welcome our Assistant City Clerk. Welcome. Looking forward to working with you. Um, and my last thing is to let everyone know now, uh, we updated our website. So if you have any complaints or any, um, trash, big trash pickups or anything that you need our Public Works or our city manager to look at, you could do it online and load the, uh, photo of your trash pickup or, I don't know if you could explain that a little bit more, Sean?
Yes, um, so thank you. So, uh, if folks are interested on the city's website, you go to the main website, you hit the icon on the front, Request for Service. It'll go to Public Works. You can put in all the required information and then you can now attach a pictures of the, of the items that you want picked up or that you've seen out there or address some issue, Request for Service from Public Works. Um, we, it was just real quick, we had to, uh, at the request of the council, we got, we updated our webpage to it. It was a little bit of, uh, you know, you had to write some script to get it on there and put it on there so we could do it, cause it wasn't our original programming for our website.
And I wanna, Beckham is not here, but I wanna thank Beckham for working on that, cause I know I nagged him, uh, for about two weeks on, on. I wanted that up and it wasn't. because I know I nagged him for about two weeks on, I wanted that up, and it wasn't up. So thank you to Beckham and Sean for working on that. And that's all for me. Thank you.
I also attended the event on the seventeenth of Metro, the presentation at Losinger High School. And I agree that it was not the event that I originally had hoped we would have, where like yourself, I had expected for us to be able to sit, hear the speaker, and have a Metro person answer. But they say that that event is coming. Again, I think the mayor and I, in sitting on the subcommittee, we verbalize continuously what our desires are as far as communication with our residents. So I agree completely with your words. Also, on the twenty-seventh, I attended the We Rock the Spectrum reopening. What a fantastic place for kids. The owner is absolutely outstanding. I had a chance to sit and speak with her and asked her what ages she's looking to attract, and nobody is counted out. It doesn't matter how old you are in years, if that's what you need to be and the services that you need. She is very much open to all kids and young adults going and participating. Also, I attended as well the Community General Plan Meeting on the thirty-first. Very informative. I also, like Bernadette had said, would appreciate hearing more income, less from us council and more from the residents. It's real important that, moving forward, that we have as much input as possible so that there's a clear path as to which direction the city should be moving. That being said, I look forward to seeing everybody this coming Saturday at the Jazz Festival at Jane Adams Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Protem. So I also attended the the grand reopening of the Kids Gym, also known as We Rock the Spectrum. Yeah, we're just actually fortunate to have this this type of facility in the city of Longdale to to provide a much-needed service to children with special needs. So to have them in our community is really a treat to have such a great organization in our community. And that they will, we call it a re-grand opening because it was previously operated by another operator. And we were fortunate enough to be able to keep the facility here in the city of Longdale under a new owner who has the same passion and commitment to children's of special needs and children that are on the spectrum in their families. So we're just delighted that they were able to have their re-grand opening and that we had a part of that. And we also have some good food at the same time. So so that's always a good draw. Also, I attended the, so the Metro, the Metro Sea Line Meeting. In addition to attending the one here in the city of Longdale, I also attended the meeting in in Redondo Beach. And I attended that meeting purposely to see what type of meeting that they were going to have, because it was before Longdale. And I knew going in, shortly after arriving, I should say, that the fix was in, in terms of having a meeting whereby the residents would be able to converse with the Metro officials, when it was pretty much like a scoping meeting where you just go and you look at different displays, and there's no questions and answers or what have you, and no opportunities really for a lot of questions and answers. Some one-on-one, yeah, you can talk to the the persons who staff in each individual display, but no opportunity for a group discussion, if you will. So I I knew that this is, that was going to be the same setup in Longdale. So even though we were given the impression that we would have opportunity to have our residents have engaged in a dialogue, if you will. And so that certainly was not the case, and that was evident when I went to the the Redondo Beach one, that that was going to be the same thing in Longdale. So that they, and I said, the reason why I said it, because the fix was in, that where they can say, well, we gave you the same type of meeting that that we did in Redondo Beach, right? But knowing that that that's not what we requested or what have you. But it's a good escape, I should say, I guess. So nonetheless, we're looking for Metro to to conduct a meeting where residents can have some questions, answers, and some dialogue with Metro on the various proposals concerning the the Green Line here in the near future. Also attended the general plan and Hawthorne specific plan update workshop. I want to thank the staff for putting that together. I mean, you guys worked through the through the COVID, and that was challenging of itself, you know, conducting these workshops through through COVID. And that was, of course, our first live one since COVID. And so I just really appreciate you guys putting together, you know, the presentations. This is one of those things where you, if you ever have said, well, you know, the city should have A, B, and C. Why does the city allow A, B, and C? Well, this is your opportunity, you know, to influence or have influence on what is allowed in the city in terms of development, in terms of the future of the city, of what the city could potentially look like in the future, because it's all governed by the zoning and the general and the specific plans. And so for those who are interested, has ever said to this to themselves, why does the city allow this? Why don't the city have A, B, and C? Well, the question could be, the answer could be because the zoning may or may not permit such. But this is an opportunity to have those things considered. So if you didn't have opportunity to avail yourself of the the meeting that we just recently had, I'm sure we're going to have some in the in the future, right? And so when you when you hear of those opportunities, I would encourage you to definitely participate, because that's where those decisions are not made, but they're they're definitely are considered in terms of the the general and the Hawthorne specific plans. So once again, if you see that that is happening, we have another one, that's what those meetings are about. So I encourage people to participate. Councilwoman Cuevas, I want to thank you for heading up the Relay for for Life event. I had the opportunity to to stop by. It was good to see your kids, saw your children. I hadn't seen them in in a while. They're all all grown now. And but thank you for heading that up, such a a great event for cancer research. And possibly, yeah, we could partner with some other communities at Alondra Park or what have you in the in the near future, maybe next year. But we will thank you for for hosting that. And with that, I think that's all I had. And of course, yeah, we will see you at the Blues. We will see you at the at the Blues Festival this weekend. We hope we get a break in the weather. I'm hearing mixed weather reports, right? It may rain. Okay, I I heard it may rain. And and I'm hearing it may be a hot rain, you know, so a Louisiana-style rain, right? Where it's really humid or what have you. So but but we'll see, but we'll be there. Nevertheless, and we definitely, whether rain or shine, we won't have the Blues, but we will enjoy the Blues, right? And so we'll be there. And with that, that's all I have tonight. And it's, let's see, what time is it? Okay, seven thirty-two. We're getting out a little early tonight. Okay. Cuevas, you sure you didn't have about ten more?
No, not today.
No, not today? Okay, just make, just make it sure. Okay. And with that, we have exhausted our calendar for today. The next regularly scheduled meeting of Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, September nineteenth, in these here council chambers. It's now seven thirty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.